Good morning. Welcome to the February 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting for Blue Earth County. If we could all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have our agenda reviewed, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Second, got a motion by Mark, a second by Kevin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against the same. It passes. And we have a public comment from Mr. Fitzsimmons. The public comment portion of the board meeting allows an opportunity for citizens to address the county board in a public setting. Mr. Dan Fitzsimmons has requested time on the agenda to request to address the county board today. This is a public meeting with a set agenda. Therefore, we ask the public to limit their comments to three minutes or less. And I have asked our county administrator to keep time and provide you with a one-minute warning. Remember, the county board will not take action on comments during this period. Mr. Fitzsimmons, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name's Dan Fitzsimmons. My address is 566-39164th Street, Good Thunder. I'm here to speak on behalf of 74 residents of Lyra, Rapidan, Decoria, and Buford Townships, as well as the city of Good Thunder. We are concerned about the violations of the conditional use permit that is held by MFS Recycling Site located in Section 1 of Lyra Township. I have copies of their signatures with the packet I have given you. Permit PC 3521 was approved by the Planning Commission on October 6, 21, and by the county board on October 19, 21. As part of the application process on Page 2, Items 1 and 2, state that there is a need for a source-separated organic material recycling facility in Blue Earth County. No one here would disagree with that, but why is material coming into the site from Wisconsin and Iowa? The products that are imported are some of the nastiest-smelling products the site receives. It consists of so-called composted manure from Wisconsin and fish/pet food byproduct from Iowa. One has to wonder what is wrong with those products that they have to ship them in so far to get rid of them. As part of the finding of fact and the Planning Commission's recommendation for permit approval on Page 12, Item J, clearly states that the proposed use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity of the site. This is where the operators are out of compliance. There are three major issues with this site that are either injurious or impede the enjoyment of surrounding properties. Number one, the three landowners and myself who farm the property adjacent to the site spend a minimum of eight to 10 hours every spring picking up trash that is blown in from the site before we can plant our crops. This trash includes plastic wrapping material, cardboard, and plastic jugs. I was told by one of the operators of the site to just work it into the soil and it will go away. That is not an option. Flies. Number two, the fly population has exploded since the site reopened in 2021. One of our neighbors didn't bother to fill their swimming pool for their children last summer because the property was overwhelmed with flies by the site. From the site. Number three, odor. This is the big one. As one resident accurately described it, "It's a smell straight from the bowels of hell." I talked to a custom applicator that spreads the finished product on fields for producers. He told me his operators call it "the smell of death." This smell is present 24/7. It just depends on wind direction as to who is going to get the worst of it. On still nights when the wind isn't blowing, it hovers over the whole area, even at minus 15 degrees. When we initially began calling in complaints about the odor, we were told that professional nasal ragers had been hired who said they could find no offensive odor. My advice would be tell them to keep their day jobs. Once staff started coming out... I would ask for about a minute and a half. We have been patient for a year.
Another minute and a half.
Thank you. Once staff started coming out to respond to our complaints, they were able to verify the smell. It was believed that some of the problem was in the receiving area and that the door of the tipping building was not being closed. While that may be part of the problem, it doesn't explain the smell all day, every day. Examples of not being able to use the property are: A resident of the neighborhood planned a class reunion at his home but had to cancel it due to the smell. Another resident had a 40th birthday planned for a Saturday evening. Shortly after the guests arrived, the wind direction changed. The guests soon got back in their cars and left because of the smell. You cannot open your windows on your house if you are downwind. It can even seep through the clothes windows if the wind is strong enough. Outdoor activities are at risk because the wind can change direction during the day and suddenly you are overcome with the stench. We have been emailing and calling complaints into county staff for over a year. I am sure that they have hundreds of them on file. We realize that staff has put a lot of time and effort into this site trying to get it to work. We believe the county has spent enough time and money trying to fix this with no notable results. After 13 months of waiting patiently, as we were told to do, it's time for the commissioners who represent us to do their duty, pull the permit, and shut the site down. When that happens, we would expect the site would be cleaned up in a reasonable amount of time so that we may be able to use and enjoy our properties and get on with our lives. Thank you for your time. I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons, for your comments. And you understand that the staff has been working on this and we've been working on this with our county attorney's office.
I do understand that, but like I said, we have been patient.
And we understand that, and thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, can we ask a clarifying question?
Please.
In the first paragraph, Mr. Fitzsimmons, you talk about the residents of the townships and the city of Good Thunder. Just to be clear, that's a residence of the city of Good Thunder, correct?
Right, yeah. Not the whole city, absolutely.
And thank you for attaching those names and addresses. I thought that was clear.
Just a side comment, it was suggested that I go get some of this on my shoes and track it in here so you could enjoy it also.
We appreciate you doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need to act on this to put it in the record, or is it in?
No. This is just a comment.
No, no action is needed at this time.
But thank you.
But it will be included in the minutes, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay. The next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. The planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items, and this is a public hearing. The public comment will be allotted in just a moment, and I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce the items before the board. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Considine, Senior Land Use Planner.
Morning, John.
Morning, John.
Good morning. First on the agenda here this morning is PC 22-22. It's a request for review and approval from SK Properties for an after-the-fact interim use permit to allow grading and filling for a bluff stabilization project, following the excavation outside of a permitted project area. The property is zoned light industrial and is described as Lot 2, Block 1 of the Turtle Clammer subdivision, all located in part of the northeast quarter of Section 23, South Bend Township. At the Planning Commission, the staff presented the report, representatives of the applicants were present, and there was no public comment. A member of the Planning Commission stated a concern about the original conditions of the conditional use permit resolution for bluff stabilization project appeared to have been ignored. There is a possibility of another major deviation from the plan that would require future action. The commission member asked, financial assurance should be required to ensure the project will get done as shown in the engineered plans. An initial motion was presented recommending approval of their request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. The motion died due to a lack of a second. Discussion by the commission continued with a focus on the possibility of requiring inspections of the project conducted by a geotechnical engineer. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted six in favor, two one opposed, to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with conditions recommended by staff. The motion included an additional condition requiring a geotechnical engineer to conduct monthly inspections once the work has started and that the applicants provide reports pertaining to inspections to county staff. The board action for this item is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open for public comment on PC 22-22. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and I'll ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Any comments on PC 22-22? For the third time, any comments on PC 22-22? If not, we'll close the public comment period, and I will get discussion from the board.
I'll move approval of the resolution based on the recommendations outlined by the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but just a clarification, this has been an ongoing issue, and John and the staff have done a great job trying to stay in front of it, but we've just got some stuff to clean up out there. So, thanks for all your work on that.
Great. No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same?
It passes. Next item is PC 07-23. It's a request for review and approval by Carl R. Schmitz and R. Schmitz for an interim use permit to operate a short-term rental unit. The property is zoned agriculture and conservation. The property is in the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 13 in Garden City Township. At the Planning Commission, the staff presented the report. The applicants were present. They indicated to the Planning Commission that short-term rentals in the more rural areas of the county are different than those in more densely populated areas. Therefore, short-term rentals in the more rural areas should not be subject to the same level of standards. They also questioned the occupant limitation of eight guests based on staff's review of the septic system design capacity. They added that by having less frequent rentals, their occupancy could be treated differently. There was no additional public comment. The Planning Commission briefly discussed the amendment indicating that the septic system is designed based on the number of bedrooms of a dwelling. They expressed no issues or concerns with the proposal. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff with the conditions recommended by staff. The board action for this item is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
At this time, we'll open for public comment on PC 07-23. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and I'll ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Is there any comments on PC 07-23? Again, any comments on PC 07-23? And for the last time, any comments for PC 07-23? With no comments, I'll bring this back to the board.
And we'll move to approve.
Second?
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Go ahead.
PC Item 06-23 is a request for review and approval by Blue Earth County for an amendment to Chapter 24, Zoning, Article 6, the Urban Fringe Overlay District, or UFD. The amendment updates the purpose, uses, and general standard sections of the article and added the Urban Fringe District Map section as Section 24-505. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the report. One citizen addressed the Planning Commission and asked if the wording in Section 24-504C could be amended to add or to assist in bringing an existing use into compliance. The individual asked to strike Section 24-504C4, which states, "The purpose of the map amendment must be for a less intense land use and zoning district because other protections are already included." The members of the commission indicated the information provided by the public should be reviewed by the county attorney's office before including in the amendment. They stated they were comfortable with the amendment as presented by staff and that if suggested changes presented by the public are simple, they could be considered at the county board. Furthermore, I believe the individual did follow up with email to the board outlining the proposal in more detail. Staff did have time to review the proposal, and staff does have concerns about the proposal. First off, Item 24-504C makes reference to Section 24-46. That section actually outlines the process for the map amendment. And so, adding language that says, "Or if the proposed map amendment would assist in bringing an existing use into compliance," is in an appropriate zoning district, does not seem to make sense because it's outlining that you either follow the specified process and code, or you are bringing an existing use into compliance. Furthermore, staff believes that that language would open the door for someone to potentially add their use to a neighboring piece of property and then seek forgiveness retroactively through a map amendment. Staff would have big concerns about that. And additionally, the item that was requested to be struck, where it was stated, "The purpose of the map amendment must be for a less intense land use and zoning district," both the purpose of the UFD references intensity, and as well in the county land use plan, Page 75, makes reference to directing higher-intensity uses to municipalities. So, staff would not be in favor of the proposed language proposed by the individual. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. And the board action for this is adoption of the ordinance amendment based on findings recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, we will open to public comment on PC 06-23. The hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comment to three minutes, and I will ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Please state your name and address.
Carl Friedrich, 624 South Second Street, Mankato, Minnesota. I believe striking item number four is of primary importance at this moment. The Urban Fringe Overlay District is to stop leapfrogging of development in the area within the district. If there is an adjoining use and a person would request to modify the map so that they can bring their property into compliance with the existing zoning that is right next to it, there are plenty of protections in the Urban Fringe Overlay District language and between the orderly annexation agreements between the cities and townships that will protect development if we're only amending and widening an area of a use that is there. By leaving number four in, you cannot widen an existing use to bring an area into compliance unless it's a less intense use. The example I gave in my comments was the Mobile Home Park in South Bend Township. It owns a portion of property that is currently zoned residential. In fact, it surrounds it, but a portion of some of the lots are in that residential area. To bring it into compliance, they would have, would maybe ask to upgrade the map so it's in a zone that is not just simply residential. With number four in there, they couldn't even apply for that because something other than residential is generally a more intense use. I've had Mr. Leary comment to me a number of times, "We can't do that because you're moving and expanding a boundary a bit." When I was at the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission members said, "Well, we're not intending to prevent someone to expand the map slightly if it's an adjoining use," even though that map amendment might be a slightly greater use, a slightly more intense use. All the protections are in the ordinance and the UFD language to stop widening of a more intense use and the problem that Mr. Considine pointed out, if somebody is, buys a piece of property and starts using it, similar to the situation you had earlier. What we have are a number of non-conforming uses out in the counties, in the townships right now, that if they could expand the zoning district that is immediately adjacent to them onto the property they're already using and have been using for years, it would be easier for them to bring it into compliance, do things to modify the uses of their property so all the neighbors would be happier. I'm not asking that you allow the spot zoning issue, simply that you allow them to apply for a map amendment. It goes through the entire process, even though the map amendment would create a more intense use, but it would only be widening a use that's already immediately adjacent to it.
Mr. Chair, that's three minutes.
The other language about compliance, I was under the understanding that that may be even applied to if the septic or some use of the property is not in compliance. You couldn't apply for the map amendment. If that is not the case, I'm okay with leaving that language out, but I've had Mr. Leary comment to me a number of times when I've been working with him on some problem properties that, "Well, you can't come in and ask to modify the map amendment because you're not in compliance. You have to bring the property into compliance first." Well, unless we can get in the appropriate zoning district by applying for a map amendment, we can't get into compliance. So, that's why I was trying to put that language in.
Thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Thanks. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 06-23? For a third time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 06-23? Seeing no other comments, I bring this back to the board.
I'll move approval of the adoption of the ordinance amended based on the findings recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question. It talked about, and John, you talked about staff and stuff. One of the things it said, "Information provided should be reviewed by the county attorney's office." Has that been done? Is that included when you talked about staff review as well?
Yes. The planning staff is very satisfied with the county attorney's review of the proposed amendment.
Okay. And is the county attorney satisfied?
I am. It's a business decision by the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm comfortable with this language after visiting with John online this morning a little bit and hearing his report today. I appreciate that. Now, Carl, I don't object to you talking with the staff a little more, but when you come to the Planning Commission the day when we're supposed to make a decision and have all of this thrown at us, it wasn't, this was pretty major language changes, and that's why I think I'm, then the Planning Commission, we're comfortable with leaving it the way it was. I'm comfortable with what John came up with today, but I certainly would encourage you to reach out to John or someone and have some more discussions. We can discuss this, but to try to make these amendments and changes at this level is, I'm going to follow the staff recommendation.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against the same? And it passes. Thank you.
Is that all you have for us, John? Oh, that's right. Yeah. Thank you. Have a good day.
We will then go to Human Services. Phil? Good morning. Morning, Phil.
Morning, Phil.
How are you this morning?
I'm well, thank you. Yourself?
Wonderful, thank you. Waiting for the storm.
Yeah, that's for sure, isn't it? Yeah, you hurry along. There's stuff coming, we hear. That's what they say. Storm of the century. Well, thank you for your time today, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I have a few action items that I'll bring to your attention as a group. The first of those in behavioral health. This is our standing agreement with our adult mental health initiative. Ours is called South Central Community-Based Initiative. This is a two-year allocation, and it is the kind of infrastructure that helps us provide our mental health services to adults, especially those with serious and persistent mental illness, which that consists of five specific diagnoses that are more chronic for individuals that have those kinds of situations. We offer therapy, the social rec, support services through our second-class step clubhouse, and we also take a fiscal host administrative fee for this contract. The renewal agreement was a 1% increase from the state. The new total is over $800,000, and the club host portion is also increased by $3,000 from $20,000 to $23,000. Fiscal host allocation was flat, and the agreement term is January 1st of '23 through December 31st of '24, so a two-year cycle. The next item, Substance Use Disorder Programs. The board has heard me bring, I think this is the fourth, waterfall entity that provides detox for us. The statute is those that reside in our county or who are detained by law enforcement within our county, determined to be in need of detox. We only use these other contracts when Brown County Evaluation Center is full. This contract for New Life Treatment Center, $450 a day, which represents a $100 reduction in the per diem when you're contracted, so that's our motivation to have a backup contract. The term, January 1st of '23 through December 31st of '23. Excuse me. And just a comment on that, that we continue to struggle with volume for detox and bed space for detox. So, we're needing some of these backup contracts to support law enforcement having a place to take individuals who need this service. The third item, Mental Health Center, Michael Goblish. This is for our core medication management and psychiatric services. Michael does assessments for us in urgent care. This is supportive of the South Central Community-Based Initiative, which is item number one. His contract, new rate of $109.76 per hour, which is an increase of 3.5%, or $3.71. Hours remain flat, averaging 20 per week, and we do have not exceed language of $114,150.40. Term, January 23 through December 31st of '23. And finally, just bringing someone forward for our social service task force, very appreciative of the volunteer, Ms. Ofulabi is a student at MSU, and she is majoring in criminal justice. She is a resident of Commissioner District 3. And, Mr. Chair, those are my action items for today.
Can I look for a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? The only question I had is, okay, I wanted to verify, is what you said, that on the New Life Center Treatment Center, that $450 per day is while they are there?
Correct, yep. And usually a stay is two days.
So, we're not, it's not like... We're not buying upfront.
No, no. We have structured some of those contracts that way, and I know the board understands that, yeah, there's some risk in that.
Well, some of our youth centers are, to guarantee us a space, we have to...
Correct.
...put the money there for the whole year.
Sure.
I understand it, but I just wanted to verify that when somebody is there, that's when we...
Exactly right. These are two different strategies that you see us scrambling. We've talked about bed space on both the adult and... bed space on both the adult and the kid side. When you do have crisis, which has happened in the last couple of weeks where there's been a lot of activity after hours, trying to find a safe place for like a juvenile, and we have no beds, and it is a crisis. It is really that bad. And so that's one strategy that Chair is talking about, in that we guarantee a bed space, which helps to some degree, but doesn't maybe guarantee a high tide situation. And then here's another strategy where we have a waterfall of providers where we're in contract with. This is, the really motivation here is that it's cheaper per diem, so we're trying to practice smart in that way.
All right, thank you very much.
And how far away is that?
So this is in Woodstock, Minnesota, and Woodstock, Minnesota is in Pipestone County, so right on the South Dakota border, yeah, so...
Little ways.
Yeah, probably close.
Yeah, but when we're talking about areas up in Duluth...
Right, it might be better than that.
This is, this is better than that.
So, right.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have informational discussion items regarding our housing programs. There is a cover sheet in your packet that kind of outlines the three areas that I'll cover today. It is a snapshot of 2022 data, some of our outcome measures tracked, just to let the board know where we're at. The first two items, South Central Supportive Housing Initiative, Andrew says also called the Blue Earth County Supportive Housing Program, same, same thing, serves eight counties. The counties are listed in the bullet there, and we've had this team together for a long time. The second part that also is more localized is the Blue Earth County Support Housing Support, which gets confusing. Long-term homeless, and the board has heard you talk that these are about different definitions of how we consider someone homeless. Long-term homeless has a specific definition to it, and we can tap into other funds. So that one is specific to our county, using the available funding and providing case management and rental assistance. So those are two that have been there. This third one, Regional Housing Project, is relatively new. There are the four counties banded together, Blue Earth, Rice, La Sura, and Niclet. We are looking at how do we overlap the human service system and housing where there's cracks. This is at its startup, and we've had two grants that we've successfully pursued. The first grant really paid for some of our resources as far as staff goes, and the second grant is more the applied support to individuals, first and last month rent, app fees, if there's any application fees, and back rent, if that fits. We do have, it's not on Andrew's slides here, but a coordinated entry is a central place where people can come, and because it is complex, present their situation, and we will triage from there. So because there's different definitions that meet different funding sources, we use the coordinated entry as our front door. The slides are fairly self-explanatory, but if there's any questions, I'll certainly take those. The first one talks about our supportive housing team, and the enrollment numbers, newly enrolled, 11, total participants, 123, total households, 70. You'll see a split out of multi-person households, usually that means families, and then single individuals, which are more than half of the story. The exit numbers and reasons are the second graph, and pointing out the leaving of voluntary departure to subsidize housing. The sample size is very small, but these numbers do hold year over year, that most people leave to subsidize housing, which I would say is an implied goal. It doesn't mean that the other reasons for leaving are all necessarily bad, incarceration is, but the others might be for good reason. But we do like people to go to something that is more stable, so a plan there. The second group of slides is about the housing support, long-term homeless. You'll see the year-over-year look at total open cases, total enrolled at this point, seven, and six closed, and the total open on December 31st was 14 at the end of this last year. The reasons for exiting, again, very small sample size, so hard to make full determinations at a year snapshot, but you, you see here voluntary closure due to unsubsidized housing, so this transient population of people that are housing are homeless for a long time. There might be a voluntary choice just to exit the supports because of times where they do not want that structure built around them. It can feel too structured for them, and so there is a different population that we serve that have a different perspective, and we try to come alongside that the best we can. And then finally, just some data on the Regional Housing Project, the one that I said is relatively new. First bullet, this is our second full year. Again, I won't go through for the board all the detail, but the Housing Resource Specialist is a position we were able to hire with this grant, and then part of our housing supervisor as well, and some of the duties that go under those two roles. The next slide with the two bubbles in it show those two grants separated by time and also by purpose. The first one we used for staffing to build some of our infrastructure, and the second one is to provide some of that support, which is the ultimate goal of these funds. The final page talks about the grant, the Community Living Infrastructure, which we of course have an acronym for, CLI is how we refer to it. You'll see that there were 36 households referred in that quarter of last year, supporting 100 individuals with 50 adults and 50 children. The 75,000 here, 73,832, was that quarter's allocation. We did break it down because there was a lot of need. Some of that I would guess is backlog of COVID situations, and so we had just a lot of need, and it basically moved the money out very quickly, and we're back at it again this year now in this, this quarter and for the rest of this year. Specific to Blue Earth County, 20 referrals for households, 58 individuals, and a total of $40,647 worth of support, and you'll see how that breaks out in different kinds of support in the grid as well as the graph, serving those individuals. Certainly working closely with law enforcement and the Yellow Line Project, if we can divert some of those situations where people do deteriorate to the point where more needs show up, end up in the ED, whatever it is, that's part of our homelessness vision, is to stop that upstream and, and try to be smart about that. The final slide is a breakdown of the counties that are served. This is a voluntary partnership of the counties that said, yeah, we have an issue here and we want to be part of building this plan. Standardizing the way we do this practice into the future is really the goal.
All right, any questions? There was a article, I believe on Sunday, in reference to the cooperation between the city of Maine, Canada, and Blue Earth County on the homeless. Is some of that pertaining to this, or if not, could you expand on that?
It sure is. The way it kind of breaks down, I don't know if it's in Andrew's notes here, but we have what they call integrated service providers, and they're people that can wrap around certain individuals rather than having them in institutions, that whole theory that we've talked about in a lot of different things that we do in human services, try to practice smart and efficiently. I think that's where that really shows up, is that locally, if there's providers or owners of apartment buildings that will provide that wraparound support, that's where we really need to talk and get together, either grassroots up, or what we expect to happen this session is money coming down at us and trying to triage that and sort that out to make it, you know, the best bang for our buck. And the city has been a growing partner with this, I'd say even in the last several years. I know Bob and I have talked about this quite a bit, trying to get that all aligned, and it's going very well. Andrew and Nancy, Andrew is our supervisor, and Nancy at the city get along very well, and so there's, there's a lot of upward potential for that, Commissioner.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, Phil. Good to see you all. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Shovels are on sale, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can buy your snow blowers here. County Ditch 63, Bob?
Well, first, Mr. Chair, maybe we'll start with the county board minutes.
Okay.
I'll move the minutes.
Second. Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Passes.
Next will be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against, the same. All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number five in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We do have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that is authorization for the chair and the administrator to sign an agreement with the Minnesota Public Employee Association Probation Officers Unit. This is a three-year agreement that's been negotiated. It has the same general wage adjustments as other groups that we've negotiated with, with a $1.50 increase effective, excuse me, January 1st of this year. And then, excuse me, 3.25%, both in '24 and '25, as well as including the JET system, our new pay scale system. A couple other language items are the conversion of excess vacation into a healthcare savings plan, that's the same language that we have with other groups. We also added a floating holiday to this group with a reduction in sick leave accrual. That is consistent with a couple other groups that we have that language in. And then we had a number of language cleanup items. We did also talk about a couple of things that ended up outside of the contract. The employer agreed to allocate some budget resources to the Community Corrections Department for tuition assistance. That was one of the pieces that we heard from the group, that they wanted access to more training dollars. And then the group asked for a meet and confer next summer to talk about career progression and some of the retention issues that they felt we needed to be aware of. And so while those aren't technically part of the contract, we will comply with those two pieces just to fulfill our obligation through that negotiation process. So staff are recommending approval of this agreement.
For a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Good job.
It's nice to see this is the last one, correct?
No, we do have a new group that we'll just be getting going, but of the existing groups we had, yes, this was the last one.
Good job. Good job. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And that passes.
Thank you. Under informational items, we did have a resignation of a sergeant in our 911 telecommunication area, so we have initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a clerical specialist in our Human Services Department, so we've initiated to recruit and fill that position. Then we had a resignation of a correctional officer in their jail, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. And then, again, another resignation of a sergeant in our correctional jail area, and so I've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Another resignation of a data support specialist in Human Services, so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. Now we kind of move into, well, we filled a number of positions. So we have filled a part-time library technician position. We've also filled a maintenance technician in our public works facility. We've also filled a facilities maintenance technician in our facilities arium. Filled a property and environmental resources specialist position. Filled eligibility specialist in our Human Services Department. Then we had a couple of promotions of a licensed specialist two to a licensed center coordinator. This is part of a newly budgeted position. We had a promotion of a correctional officer to a sergeant in our jail, and then a promotion of a program coordinator in Human Services to a supervisor of the Mental Health Center, again, part of a newly budgeted position without backfill. Then we had a promotion of a correctional officer to another sergeant position in our jail, and then the follow-along to those are the authorization to initiate recruitment for two correctional officers. And we had three lateral transfers of social workers within our Human Services Department to some newly budgeted in-choices positions, so we'll be working on those backfills in future reports. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have on the human resources activity? All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number six in your packet is the County Ditch 63 Drainage Easement. You may recall, towards the end of last year, there was a findings and orders approved by the Drainage Authority for County Ditch 63 that required that the petitioner supply the Drainage Authority with a new easement written in the favor of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority. This was shifting the outlet a little bit, and so there was a new easement document that was required. So that has now been received, and the Drainage Authority signature is requested for this easement. We have consulted with Rinky Noonan, our attorney, and so we're bringing it forward here for the board's consideration today.
I'm over approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Thank you.
Item number seven in your packet is the Financial Status Report for January 31st. This is the first month of our new fiscal year. You'll see the total revenues were about $3.8 million against expenses of about $7.8 million. Typical this time of year that revenues lag behind expenses. We do see, you know, the new pay plan showing up with an increase, a fairly substantial increase in our salary and wages lines. I would also draw your attention, again, to the transportation sales tax line. That revenue continues to remain stronger than what we've even budgeted, so that continues to remain a positive story on the revenue side of things. Under the Enterprise Fund, the Ponderosa landfill, you'll see revenues were about $415,000 compared to expenses of $165,000. Again, there's a lot of variability in the expenses on the Ponderosa, depending on cell development and other types of major investments there. The second page shows cash and investment balances. You'll see towards the top of the page, our total available funds are sitting at $51.4 million against a six-month operating needs of $58.6 million. Towards the bottom, you'll see a line called, or titled, Total County Funds, we're sitting at $21.7 million. So be happy to answer any questions that the board may have about the Financial Staff Report.
I don't have any questions this time.
Well, I think this comes to the Commissioner's Report on committees, and Kevin, I think I'm going to let you start out today.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
You had a busy two weeks, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since our December 7th meeting, we all participated in the joint board meeting with Niclet County. I participated on February 8th and 9th. I participated on February 8th and 9th at the AMC Drainage Conference. We had nearly 200 county commissioners and staff in Alexandria for that drainage conference, very well attended, a lot of good information. Also attended NACO February 10th through the 14th as part of the Ag and Rural Affairs Policy Committee. I've had a chance to meet with multiple secretaries and undersecretaries out there. The AMC Drainage Work Group, Stakeholders Group, as well as the Drainage Work Group itself, also met on February 10th. On February 13th, I participated on the PACE Committee Zoom call as part of the Rural Minnesota Energy Board. And then on the 17th, I participated with others on the AMC Board Orientation as Vice Chair of the Environment Natural Resources Policy Committee at AMC. I'm an alternate on the board and was invited to participate in that orientation. Conversations and calls have been primarily on the short-term rental agreement, the UFD as we've talked about today, County Shop, and MFS. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mark?
Okay. Let's see, on February 7th, a joint meeting with Niklet County after a board meeting. And then February 9th, at a MICU meeting, it was online. And then the February 17th, did have an AMC Board Directors Meeting. That was a virtual thing. That was a kind of, I don't know, call it refresher, but an introductory for new members of the board. And it was quite comprehensive. And yeah, had calls on different issues, including the shop. And that pretty much concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Kip?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of my meetings were connected to my SECB committee that I'm on. We had a finance committee meeting. We had a pre-meeting for the chairs for the meeting coming up this Thursday, and then working on the 911 telecommunicator language. And then several other calls related to all the items that have been mentioned already. So that's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. And for my sake, a lot of it's been covered by, obviously, Kevin, who both of us were out at the NACO Legislative Conference. But I was in on the Blue Earth Niklet County joint meeting, which is always great to have, keep our conversations going back and forth with our neighbor counties. I, the next, on the 8th, I had a Blue Earth Niklet County Safe Roads Meeting. As with, on the 9th, I was involved with a membership committee meeting in Washington, DC for NACO. And then I continued through the NACO Legislative Conference. I'm a Vice Chair of RAC, Vice Chair of Transportation. I'm on Arts and Culture Commission meeting and a membership commission. We had talks from President Biden, Transportation Chair Peter Budzic, and numerous other, I know Amy Klobuchar and Tina Smith spoke with the group, our Minnesota group. So, and so we were pretty blessed to have a good meeting. We had good weather, which is nice for Washington, DC at this time of year. After I got back, I had a board meeting for TDS on Friday the 17th, along with Kevin and Mark. We had a virtual orientation for the AMC Board. And besides the calls on the new public works building, that was the end of my report. Call for a recess?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, a second for recess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same. Thank you very much.
Good job.[1725.62]